Okay, Mauricio, 3 o'clock, call this meeting to order.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Stuyvesant. Commissioner Joseph.
President.
Commissioner Viscara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama.
Here.
Mayor Svechnikov.
Here.
All members present.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we have a couple of additions to, well, changes to the agenda. If you all recall, last month, we were supposed to issue a proclamation for the 77th anniversary of Israel's independence, which was pushed to this month, but was inadvertently left out of the agenda. So we're going to be putting that on. Commissioner Joseph requested to remove the discussion regarding the use of pesticides year-round. And Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lama requested an add-on discussion regarding tobacco smoke and marijuana in residential buildings.
Okay, so one off, one on?
Yes.
Alright, do we need a vote, or we could just get consensus?
No, there's no vote.
Okay, perfect. We all agree?
Yes.
We agree.
Yes, okay. Mauricio, would you just reread that?
So, the first one we're gonna hear is the 77th anniversary for Israel. So it reads, "Whereas on May 14, 1948, Israel's first Prime Minister David Van Gruyem publicly read the Declaration of Independence of Israel, and every year this event is commemorated on Israel's Independence Day, also known as Yom HaAdzamot." I apologize.
That was good.
Whereas Yom HaZhamot is also celebrated in the United States with large festivals, events, and parties organized in the community. And whereas during this celebration, the Speaker of Israel Parliament, or Naset, makes remarks on Mount Herzel with a dramatic televised presentation for all citizens of Israel. And whereas the day before Yom HaAdzamot is Yom HaZi Karan.
The more you say it, the better it gets.
Which is a ceremonious occasion and day of remembrance officially known as Israel's Day of Remembrance for fallen soldiers and victims of terrorism, commemorating the Israelis who perished fighting for the state of Israel. Now therefore, dwai, Luris Svechnikov as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1, as Israel's Independence Day in the City of Sunny Hills Beach.
Thank you. We have with us the Deputy Counsel for Israel, Mrs. Bach, if you don't mind, and Kennedy. If you don't mind just coming up, I know you want to say just a few words, and then we'll come down and take a picture.
Thank you so much, Mayor Commissioners. I really just wanted to say a personal thank you. Being able to celebrate our 77th independence with you is a huge honor, because these proclamations are not just words. It's really a testimony to the support and the joint values and the cooperation that we share, and we're so grateful for. Israel has been going through a very tough time. And the level of support that we receive is invaluable, and we're incredibly grateful for the friendship, and we are hopeful that we will see much better days soon, and the relationship that we have makes me very optimistic for that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come down. Right, thank you. Next item, Mauricio?
Next item is 2A, the proclamation for National Safe Boating Week. The proclamation reads, "Whereas for over 100 million Americans, boating community, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. Whereas the city of Sunny Hills Beach is fortunate to have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands. Whereas our waterways can become crowded at times, causing chaos and confusion. And whereas through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving, emergency distress, and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat, free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. And whereas on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the US, with approximately 75% of these fatalities caused by drowning. Whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and cannot and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. Whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Whereas during National Safe Boating Week, the US Coast Guard and the National Safe Boating Council, along with federal, state, and local safe boating partners, encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Now therefore, dwai, Luris Svechnikov as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in the City of Sunny Hills Beach."
Thank you. So, Natalie, do you want to come up and say a few words? And obviously, well, maybe not to everybody, but we are a city that's surrounded literally by water, so this is something that's exceptionally important to us. I think this is, this is not a proclamation from, from just me, this is the entire commission supports this. If you want to just say a few words, and then we'll take a picture.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Next week is National Safe Boating Week, but we practice it 24/7, 7 days a week, every year, all year round. It's very important, and our top priority is the safety on the water. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Go down.
Yeah, I don't know if they're coming or not soon.
Alright, for the next item, we'll hold off for now, and go on to legislative update from Commissioner Viscara, who probably is gonna have to do this again next month, because the session is still not ended.
Not the plan, but maybe not, because as far as the bills that we were tracking, we are done.
Okay.
Well, maybe. Maybe. So, okay, so I wanted to, like, like the mayor said, this was supposed to be the last update, because the session was supposed to have ended at the beginning of May, but it was extended for another month. So they're still fighting for a limited number of things, not everything, most of it budget, if not all of it budget. But I wanted to go through the things that we as a commission have highlighted, and the things that we prioritized, and to see how we did. Because in the past, we would make a proclamation, or, you know, a resolution in support or in opposition, and then we would move on, and nobody would hear about it again. So we set up, I asked that we put it up, so eventually it'll go up. We set up a legislative advocacy page where we have been following everything. It started with in February of '25, which the dates are not up there, but I'm gonna ask, when we have time, that we should put like month and year, because otherwise in the future, anybody who goes there, they won't know if they should start at the top or the bottom. So the first one was the traffic congestion at the intersection of 163rd Street and Biscayne Boulevard is something that we discussed up here. It's actually not legislative in terms of Tallahassee, you know, the legislative session. But it was the first thing that we put up there, and the study for that is complete, so there has been some movement. As for the bills that we were tracking, most of it went the way that we expected. So the immigration enforcement became law, which I spoke about that in the past. Commissioner Joseph put up the prohibiting smoking and vaping. We supported it, but we saw early on that it wasn't getting much movement, so we didn't expect it to pass, and it didn't. So we, you know, we predicted that one properly. So there's the page. So you can go there, and you can also register at the bottom. If you want to get updates, you can register there. The big one that we were really fighting was the sovereign immunity, which is the one that would increase our liability as a city if we were sued, which would increase our insurance, et cetera. And that one was the nail-biter of the session, and that one, in the end, it died. So that one did not pass. That's what we wanted, so that's a good thing. Another bill that, that we supported, but again, that we knew that it wasn't getting a lot of traction, but we supported it anyway, was the homestead exemptions, and that one didn't make it. The surprise was coastal resilience. We were, it was flying through the Senate, everybody was happy, and it didn't make it. That was, that was the surprise for, for our list. In the end, it did not make it. We had also the flashing crosswalk on 196th Street, which is an item that Commissioner Joseph had brought up, and the study is complete for that one, so we were seeing some movement there. And then the local business tax, we didn't do a resolution. That's the one where we tested to see what if the city just sends a letter and we can, you know, that's one of the things that, that I was handing out when, when I was sitting with legislators. And also, we emailed it to the, to the committees, et cetera. And that local business is, is something that we opposed, and we fought it, and it died, so we're happy about that. And we also got a response from, I had written it somewhere, but we did get a response from one of the, I think it was a House rep who, who received the letter and said, "Thank you for your advocacy." So it, you know, little by little, we're, we're making our inroads. The employment of minors was one that was, that we, that I brought forward, that we opposed, and it died. So that's good. And the cardiac emergencies is the one that, that we supported, and it passed. There's another one that I brought to your attention, remember the, the recovery residencies? Had this very scary language about that you must allow, and that it was complete preemption on their part. Well, the, the Florida League was also pushing on that.
Which one? Wait, which one was this?
It's, it's the recovery residencies where you can, where people who are like recovering from, from addiction or
Oh, okay, yes, yes, okay.
And I, I didn't know that, something like 70% of these residencies exist in Palm Beach and Broward, like, for the state. So it's a, the big thing for South Florida. Very scary preemption language, but the, the league was fighting it, and they actually amended it to fix the preemption. You can't outlaw these things, but they, they fixed the preemption. So we just left it alone. And it didn't make the list or anything, but it's something that we talked about. We left it alone, and that is, I think overall, I mean, we, we did well. I mean, we only had the one surprise. Everything else went the way we, we expected, and we supported it accordingly. So, that's it for the legislative.
Thank you. I believe you probably will have to do it again, because the budget is not approved, and that's something that everyone's looking for.
I don't mind doing it.
Thank you.
I don't mind doing it. We'll, we'll see. And maybe, but maybe our representatives may, may come and do it themselves.
This is true, okay.
So we'll see.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Want to move on to, I see Rabbi Kaller is here?
Rabbi Amar is supposed to.
Okay, so.
Rabbi Baron, I didn't hear back from him.
You want to wait?
Yeah, well, let's wait a few more minutes.
Alright. Is everyone okay with that? We'll just wait for that proclamation? Yes? Alright, so we'll move on to discussion items. Let me just clarify, Rabbi Kaller, we're just gonna wait for a Rabbi Amar. That's okay. Discussion item 3A. That is Commissioner Stuyvesant.
Yes, this is just a discussion regarding the protocol for meeting requests and agendas. Okay, it's very uncomfortable that I had to bring this forward. But for a few months, I, I make sure that the commission and the city staff was well aware that the community wanted to celebrate former Mayor Norman Edelkopf for his 90th birthday. I'm not gonna go here and say anything and everything why he deserved that celebration, and I tried to make it happen in several different ways. I requested a special commission meeting to actually present to him the proclamation that he did, which is actually, if it's a proclamation, I will believe in making an official business. That request was denied. Then Commissioner Joseph requested a workshop, which also was denied. And then I asked for the use of chambers, and also was denied. For what I understood, it was denied because the majority of the commission decide not to celebrate or allow us to celebrate former Mayor Edelkopf in this body, in the chambers, okay? So I have a few notes, so, because it was brought to my attention, ordinance 2024-1019, which actually does not prohibit community events in chambers. It is, it says that the chambers is for the use of official city business. And like I said, the idea was to present Mayor Edelkopf the proclamation that we already had. And also, it doesn't say, the ordinance, that community events are prohibited here in chambers. It's actually open. Why I'm uncomfortable bringing this up is because it seems that personal disagreements with former Mayor Edelkopf is what make the majority of the commission to decide not to allow us to use this place. And also, I do have a question that there is not transparency, or there is not consistency of how we use spaces. And my suggestion would be to create a policy that reach something around, you know, allowing commissioners to use facilities for non-political, non-religious events with city manager's approval. Because in the past, we had had different events in different places, and it has never come for our approval. So we have hosted the DBPR, the Miami-Dade County Transportations, et cetera, here, and it never needed the approval of the, of the commission, or a vote of the commission. So I don't think it can be both ways, that it is an administrative decision sometimes, but sometimes it needs vote. So for transparency, for consistency, so we know also the rules of engagement, my suggestion, my proposal, if the majority agrees, would be that we can use the spaces, giving proper notice to the city manager, which is the purpose of what we needed, when we needed. He can make sure that there is not a conflict with the scheduling, and for non-political, and non-religious, and any other legal necessity there. And then the city manager can, his discretion, decide if we can use it or not. That's it.
Okay. Does anybody want to add to the discussion, or make any comments? Vice Mayor? No? Mr. Joseph?
What I would, what I would like to know is, just for clarification, was it because I had sent an email to Mauricio, and because of Sunshine, I couldn't see other responses from the other commissioners? But is it actually true that every other commissioner and the mayor did not want to acknowledge Mayor Edelkopf? Is that correct?
We needed to have a majority, which we did not have. So this is not about any particular.
So, but, but I'm just trying to, myself, to know that there wasn't one other vote for the use. Is that correct?
Right, to have a majority out of five, you would have needed to have three.
Right.
So, and, because I, I don't want to turn this into a discussion about anyone's acknowledgement or not, I want to clarify for the record, we did in fact pass the proclamation at the last meeting, so we did acknowledge him, and just like with the Israel independence, someone is not available to come to a meeting to receive a proclamation, they are welcome to come to the next meeting, or we actually discussed this, if I remember correctly, that we can bring it to them at an event of their choosing. So, again, I don't think this is about acknowledging. We did actually absolutely acknowledge.
Well, actually, it didn't, it's not correct that it passed the proclamation. We didn't vote for it. So there, it did not need a vote. It was actually automatically that we got the proclamation. And during that day, actually that day, I personally told Mayor Edelkopf not to come to receive the proclamation, because we were gonna do something for him on May 8. That is in the recording, it's on the record. And he didn't come for that reason. So, and just to clarify Jerry's question, I did receive a May 2nd, 2025 email stating that everybody answered to the request, or to the vote, everybody voted in favor or against using the space. You requested formally, Jerry, and I voted for it. So the majority, the rest, voted against it, including the mayor.
So, again, for the record, while you are correct, we don't vote on proclamations. He was absolutely acknowledged at our last meeting. Our policy has always been that as a majority, we decide. And so there was no reason for you to tell him not to come, because we did not discuss it as a majority, that we would do something for him.
I say in the previous meeting, actually. When I voted.
Again, we didn't have the consensus, we did not even have that discussion.
Okay, when we were voting for the new proclamation, ordinance rules, et cetera, I voted against, because one of the restrictions is that former elected officials cannot get a proclamation anymore. So because he hasn't had the second reading, or it wasn't just on the books yet, I was able to squeeze Norman Edelkopf proclamation last month. Otherwise, I would not be able to do it. Because, again, and that's what I voted against, one of the reasons, because we cannot give proclamation to the members of the media, or any other not only proclamations, or keys of the city, whatever, or recognitions to members of the media, or to former elected officials. So if it was the rules that we have right now, again, we couldn't even give him the proclamation, so it was a timely thing. And during that day, having that discussion, I said that we were gonna do something for Mayor Edelkopf. The reason, and that's what I know is uncomfortable to have this discussion, but we should be, we vote for something, we should own it. So I voted with Jerry to honor former Mayor Norman Edelkopf, nobody else.
Okay, so, again, this is a moot point, because you did pass the proclamation, and we did acknowledge him, and during that meeting, I actually asked you, "Should we wait until he comes?" And you said, "No, we're gonna do something later." No, so, again, I understand that you are not happy with that decision, but every time we don't have a consensus that goes against something that you personally would like to do, it doesn't mean that we need to keep bringing it up. So we have a policy in place. I don't want to have any discussion unless there's a change here, as far as changing the policy.
Yeah, we have a new policy, and this is not what I'm discussing right now.
Right, we have a policy in place for using chambers, is what I'm talking about.
Yes, exactly, and that policy doesn't say that we cannot use it for community events. Actually, the policy is a little bit ambiguous, and that's why I'm asking our city attorney to probably bring us something, so we can have specifics about when we can and we cannot use it, and when do we need approval or not. Because to present a proclamation to a former mayor, like
Again, he, we presented the proclamation in April. He had the opportunity not to come.
Correct.
He should have come. I, I cannot speak to why he didn't, why you decided to tell him that. That's not the point of this.
No, it's not.
He had every opportunity, just like anyone else.
But he's just not anyone else, okay? He's a former mayor, and one of the founding fathers of the city, okay? And just to disrespect him, not even allowing him, like, we are here for people like him. This building exists in this city for people like him. And we are so lucky to have him alive and able, at 90 years old, to be here. So I think he's very offensive, and it, it shows bias and personal issues, and that's what I want to put on the record.
I myself don't understand it, but that's.
May I?
Mayor, can I?
Can you please go over the, the policy a little bit? I mean, this is somebody's birthday, and
But not just someone.
No, 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 no. It, it is someone's birthday, so can we use city resources and cities' establishments for private purposes, basically?
There's a lot of questions there. The, the one thing I wanted to bring up, just for clarification purposes and sunshine, is the email that was sent out by the city clerk was not a request as to whether or not to have the special meeting. You're not allowed to be pulled. We can't ask you, "Do you want to do this? Do you want to do that?" It was merely a request for availability. Without that availability, you can't have the meeting. To your question, Vice Mayor, your manager runs the facilities here, and basically, you know, through, through your guidance, certainly if he sets policy, if he sets policy, you set policy as to its use, that'll be followed. I don't believe you have a specific policy. There always has to be a public purpose in what you do, and that's up for you all to determine, certainly. To the extent that there can be parameters as to when, and it's not just the use of the room, but use of staff, you know, electricity, all this other stuff that comes with it. You can certainly set a policy for that, if you so choose, you know, with regards, in conjunction with the city manager, since he does run the facilities.
Yeah. Could he be, could Norman Edelkopf been here today? I mean, we could have done it today.
No, he's out of town, actually, right now, yeah. But again, it's about availability. The issue with the availability is that for workshop, we don't need a quorum. So, so the, the request was, came Commissioner Joseph, or Commissioner Fabiola, use the space. My last request, actually, was more specific. I said from 3:30 to 40 PM that day, I want to use chambers. I don't need anybody else other than somebody to open and close the door. I didn't need any other resources, no money, no coffee, no cake, no nothing. We wanted to present to him the proclamation, and the, the community was eager and looking forward to be able to celebrate that milestone of being 90 years old, and being capable of being here with us that day. So if I'm not mistaken, for workshop, we don't need a quorum.
You don't need a quorum to be present, but you need a majority to schedule it. Otherwise, any individual, one of you, could commit any of the city's facilities, or schedule a meeting at random at any time, and it would be sort of a free-for-all. So you have to have a majority to schedule the meeting. Now if you schedule it, and, and that's the only thing I'm aware of, was a request for a workshop or a special meeting, not to just use space. That's something, you know, that you may have had with the manager. But with regards to a special meeting or workshop, you would have to have a majority to schedule it. And then if at that time, only two of you can be here, you could still proceed with it, because you don't need a quorum to actually conduct the workshop or the special, well, I shouldn't say special meeting, because for special meetings, you can vote and you have, you need a quorum. But let's say for a workshop, you would, you would not need a quorum to proceed with it, but you would need a majority to schedule it. Based on your code.
What if it was for a meet and greet?
I'm sorry?
For a meet and greet, what if we wanted to use the commission hall for a meet and greet?
Well, it depends. Is it a meet and greet with the city commission?
May I, when, when?
I mean, again, if it's more than one, keep in mind that if it's more than one commissioner that's going to do an official meet and greet, you're gonna have to publicly notice it, so it probably it depends on the nature of the meeting, and what that meet and greet would be.
Well, then we do it next month. You could tell, you could tell people and then you could have a crowd here and you know, that's, we already have a space scheduled for proclamations and awards and all of that.
The idea was.
And instead of, you know, jumbling up this.
The idea was for his ninetieth birthday.
No, I know, but if you want to have a party, then that's something different. That's the point, I think. No, but, but we could have it next month or we could have had it today is the point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And actually, thank God, we have the school. It does acknowledge the importance of the day for him and they are gonna be celebrating him next week.
Yeah, so after you give someone a slap.
Yeah, and I'm gonna bring him the proclamation there and.
What slap, I'm sorry, what slap are you talking about?
No, you just, let me finish. So it's gonna be next week is in the school that has his own name, hence the importance of Norman Edelkopf in our community. So we were able to find a way to celebrate and honor him so he doesn't have to come to chambers. But in a personal note, I can tell you, it was offensive not to allow the use of a city facility. To, for him, you know, after, no, just saying, because I had the opportunity to speak with him, you know? After what you are able to do for a community, not to be able to be used, like I said, something that he built. I was surprised as well, you know, it was, I never imagined that we were gonna even need to have this kind of conversation. So it was sad.
Okay.
I think we could have had it today, next month, and it's still open. So I, we could have honored, I mean, we did honor him.
Could have had it on Tuesday. Okay, so is there anything else? No, all right.
So Rabbi Keller is here and I appreciate it. So we will present the proclamation and then I'll send the others after.
Thank you, Jerry, I'll run the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So next item, we're gonna go back to, we're not waiting for the other rabbis. We're gonna go back to proclamations to to be.
Commissioner Joseph, you want me to read the proclamation?
Yes, please. Now, if I can just say one thing, last year's proclamation, I being told now was supposed to be a resolution so that it would be a continuing event each year. This Jewish Solidarity Day in Sunny Isles Beach is, was meant originally to be a continuing event each year. So at this point, I would like to also present to the commission to make this a resolution that during Jewish Heritage Month, we would have a Jewish Solidarity Day event within Sunny Isles.
Okay, so you're asking for a discussion item to be added to the agenda?
Yes, just, yes, at this moment.
Okay, so let's do the proclamation first.
Yes.
So that we can stay in order and then we can discuss an agenda add on if need be.
Only because it was spoken, I believe Susan went back and listened to the meeting. So it was spoken that it was meant to be an ongoing event.
Again, I just want to remind you that, that the way that that works is we would have consensus and then it would be voted on. All right, so did you have a few words or do you want to just go down and take a picture?
Well, we're see who's going to read the proclamation and then we'll take the picture.
The proclamation reads, whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach is a diverse and inclusive community that embraces people of all backgrounds, cultures and faiths, recognizing that our strength lies in unity and mutual respect. Whereas Jewish Solidarity Day serves as a time to honor the enduring contributions of Jewish individuals and communities to our society, as well as to reaffirm our commitment to standing in solidarity with the Jewish people in the face of antisemitism, hatred and discrimination in all its forms. And whereas the Jewish community has enriched the cultural, educational, civic and economic fabric of Sunny Isles Beach and beyond, sharing a heritage rooted in perseverance, justice, family and faith. And whereas Jewish Solidarity Day also provides an opportunity to reflect on the historic and contemporary struggles faced by the Jewish people to educate future generations about the dangers of intolerance and to promote a more peaceful, inclusive and compassionate world. Now, as the city stands firmly in support of Jewish residents, neighbors and allies and reaffirms its commitment to protecting the rights, dignity and safety of all people regardless of faith or background. Now therefore, do I leave suspicion as may and on behalf of the commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida hereby proclaim May sixteenth, twenty twenty five as Jewish Solidarity Day in the city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Take a picture? Okay, so that the public can anticipate what we're gonna be, what we discuss, we normally have add-ons at the beginning or changes at the beginning, but I understand that there was some confusion, Commissioner Joseph. So is there any opposition to adding a discussion item at the end? None? Okay, all right. Next item, three C.
We see the discussion regarding the repurposing of Lehman basketball court.
Okay, so I had spoken with Susan and she had mentioned that she would be open to changing over the unused basketball court underneath the causeway to tennis court, one or two tennis courts if possible. So I'd like to bring that before the commission? Yes?
Just to correct that, what I said was if there's direction from the commission, we could look into that. So since you made it a discussion item, we did look into it.
Yes.
It would, it's not big enough currently. You need a hundred and twenty by sixty for tennis. We only have ninety seven by fifty that is currently there. So if we wanted to do.
Be expanded at all the fence?
If we wanted to do that, you're looking at approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, how much is hundred and fifty A Street costing us?
I don't have that answer off the top of my head, but I can tell you that my other comment was staff's opinion is that we should open the tennis court at the Intercoastal Sports Park, see what kind of interest there is and then pursue other locations if there is a need.
Okay, but let's do that then. I'm sure it's going to be that you won't be able to keep up with the reservation.
There any other comments or discussion for the commission?
No, that was actually gonna be my comment, like that we need to see what the interest is and it may very well be great interest, but we just don't know that yet.
Okay, that's fine.
Reinvent the wheel, let's see what it is.
Quite confident.
But question on, on, on the, on what you mentioned on the, what do you call it? The dimensions, is pickleball smaller and can pickleball be considered instead?
Pickleball is smaller.
If tennis is not an option.
Yeah, but that echoes, you get echoes underneath the bridge.
What did you say?
Pickleball is smaller.
Would it fit, you know?
It would fit.
But you have a noise problem.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the demand for basketball is there and I don't know, we'll have to see. I mean, right now we have clientele for that basketball court underneath them.
And one of the, one of the nets is only a temporary, so, and it's not even in good shape.
We'll have to see, I think I, let's see how it works out when, once we have the other court built and let's take a look at the demand and we'll be able to gauge it better.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Commissioner Susan, do you want to add anything?
Fine to making it a tennis court.
All right, I, I would hesitate to, to make any sort of decision until we find out what kind of demand, but even more so adding on right now, any additional facility, facilities and that cost that's associated with it. I would be very, very hesitant to, to support something like that at this time. Okay, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, sorry, you had an add-on item.
Yeah, so this is regarding tobacco, marijuana, smoke in residential buildings. You probably know where I'm headed. So I've received and we all received an email from one of the residents who has a, a girl, a little girl. And unfortunately, he has a neighbor that it's always smoking marijuana.
Let me, let me stop you because I didn't receive that email. Do we have that email?
This was a while ago, it was back in February.
Oh, okay.
And I think.
If you could just reiterate what that's.
It was addressed, so, so basically he has a neighbor that is always smoking marijuana and it goes through the vents and it's not something occasional once in a while, but it's very constant, okay? And this is not the only complaint I received. I think even, you know, our previous commissioner, Jeanette Gatto complained of that. I think, I'm not sure if she complained of just tobacco smoke or marijuana, but regardless, I've received a few complaints, especially when we're talking about marijuana, where it goes through the vents and it's a nuisance, it's annoying. And then also obviously there's health implications associated with that, especially if you have small children or elderly people. And just wanted to see what can we do as a city, not so sure about tobacco smoke. And obviously there's laws govern, governing each building and association. But when it comes to marijuana, I was curious to see what we could do because recreational marijuana use in the, in Florida is illegal. I understand that is allowed for medicinal purposes, but what can we do to probably mitigate this issue? At least a little bit for the comfort and healthy living of some of the people going through this issue and these buildings.
First of all, I want to applaud you for bringing this up. I think this is something that's been an issue for some of these buildings, the older ones probably more so. I don't think you're allowed to smoke even for medicinal reasons, but if the, the attorney could please give us some direction as to, could we even have a discussion? Do we have any authority?
Well, from a, from a legislative standpoint, you can't, no. The only regulation that we can impose with regards to smoking deals with beaches or public parks. Depending on the circumstances, again, it, this sounds more like of a private business condominium, sounds more like a private matter that needs to be enforced within that structure, that building that we wouldn't have authority over. If it rises to a level possibly of a code enforcement violation, but I don't know. I can't give legal advice to those folks, but there are recourses, you know, as private nuisances and things of that sort. I don't know if it would rise to the level of a code enforcement violation. It's hard to tell. I, I, I think there are some medicinal marijuana that can be smoked, but I'm not sure about that either. It gets very difficult when it's done within a structure because you can't just barge down the door and go look and see exactly what they're smoking. So you have to have a fourth amendment issue to be able to even be able to get in there.
Do we have anything, Mr. City Manager, as far as code enforcement regarding smell? Or spoke, because you had, how do you even gauge that? How do you test that someone broke that code?
For smell, no. For other nuisances, yes, overgrowth, things like that, trash, debris.
Well, like, and I'm just stretching it because I'm trying to see how we can get to a good place with restaurants. Don't they have to have a certain level of, I guess, capturing the, the smoke or the smell or ventilation?
That's what I've been.
It's not necessarily code enforced, I mean, there, there's some, and that's a commercial, you know.
Well, I know it's commercial.
We would have to look at residential to see what could rise to the level, obviously, if, if there are certain odors that are emanating from your residence. You know, there've been instances and it gets very difficult. I mean, there've been houses with lots of cats where there's odor emanating. It becomes very challenging because you can't get into the home to actually validate the, the, the problem. Not saying it's impossible, we'd have to, I think code enforcement may be the only way to do it. If it, if it is illicit drug use, even if you get law enforcement involved, they're sort of limited there as well.
Limited how? I'm just trying to understand because I know.
Because if you go knock on the door and if you go knock on the door, they don't have to answer the door. And if they answer the door and they say, yeah, I'm smoking, awesome for the officer. But if they don't open the door, you know, it gets very limited, presuming again, it's unlawful, presuming it's actually marijuana. There, there's, there's certain variations now based on the T H T that you can actually smoke something. It gets very difficult for law enforcement because you actually have to take it to a lab to know exactly the level of THC to make sure that it's not, I can't remember what the, that's not marijuana, the other one is. But it's based on the level of THC. So it gets kind of, again, not impossible, but I would think the building would have regulations in that regard.
So there's no scenario where, let's say, one of our police officers knocks on a door, they're smoking, obviously, you know, we can smell it. And they open and the police officer, can they legally require, let's say if it's for medicinal purposes, to present the, the card? I mean, I know that anybody can get a card now, a medical marijuana use card, so.
I mean, I, I don't know.
I mean, does a HIPAA involved in that? I mean, do they?
It's a lot, it's, it's a lot to take in.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of factors to be considered, it would be on a case by case basis. And again, it's, you're very limited as to what information you're able to get because it is within a private residence.
Yeah.
So in these condos, all of the vents are connected or?
It just goes through, man, it just goes through, yeah. I had a neighbor that smoked cigarettes and, and it just went through. I could, I could tell what my neighbor's cooking sometimes.
Yeah.
They're cooking fish, man, forget it.
The balconies, I think that there are some buildings, aren't some of the Winston Tower buildings now smoke free?
Um, mine is not, no, I mean, they, they flick cigarettes and then sometimes you have some of the furniture and the balconies catches fire, so.
So, um, yeah, I think that the attorney is right, this is a private issue.
It's a private issue, I mean.
Wait, off the top of my head, I mean.
Let's discuss offline, I'm just trying to see how I can help some of these residents because, I mean, living like that twenty four seven is, it's, it's a lot. It drives them nuts, yeah. All right, we'll take it offline.
Okay.
Well, the reason for the no smoking bill, actually, there was no support after the marijuana bill failed.
Yeah, but you're, you're a private home though, you're your house.
Marijuana bill.
Yeah, I don't know.
It was to, it's, it was to hold back on the marijuana.
Yeah.
It wasn't actually against cigarettes, they just threw it in there.
Yeah.
But you, but you know that they continually allow cigar smoke, so it's just, you know, a catch.
They have the better lobby.
Yeah, it's a big lobby.
Okay, so we have our add-on item, Commissioner Joseph?
Yes, okay, so last year we had Jewish Solidarity Day. It was done as a resolution, but I spoke through the commission before the resolution was accepted and before the proclamation was accepted, stating that I meant for this to be a, a day, a year after year. So, and I, I want to thank first Commissioner Baskara for reposting her, the Jewish Heritage Month, I saw. So I appreciate that. And so do many residents. So I would like to ask the commission to make Jewish Solidarity Day during the month that we celebrate Jewish Heritage Month around the sixteenth of May each year and also to connect a small event to it.
Well, isn't that, wouldn't that be something we can include in the, in the budget discussions?
Yes, correct.
I think if you do that and, and then it, in the budget book at the time that we, that we review it. I, I mean, wouldn't that be the easiest, my.
Mr. City Manager, if you can clarify what the process would be to add an event?
We've had our discussion already with the budget that we've received your direction, including special section on events. So if you're going to ask us to add an event, we can, but we would have to budget for it accordingly. we would have to budget for it accordingly.
Yes, so, uh, and then possibly we could have um, also a small contribution from each Rabbi. Since, you know, and purpose is to uh, because a lot of the congregations have their separate events and the idea of Jewish Solidarity Day was to bring all of the congregations together. So in that regard, I believe we, I could work with the Rabbis to have contributions and and a larger event even with participation from the synagogues as well. So I'm asking, actually, at this point, I'm asking the Commission to acknowledge a day during Jewish Solidarity, Jewish Jewish Heritage Month as um, Jewish Solidarity Day in Sunny Isles for an event. And then with, we can speak about a budget amendment for a small amount and then I will speak with the Rabbis myself.
All right, it sounds to me like you need to flush this out a little bit because then that we have to figure out what we're gonna be accepting from the Rabbis. Um, I I just want to clarify that um, the Jewish solidarity, while I appreciate that you putting this forward, this is not something that is observed.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not an observer, it's particularly for Sunny Isles. Since we have such a large Jewish community. And because each congregation seems to do events separately.
Right.
I'm trying to bring, and they don't join very often, I'm trying to bring the congregations together for a day to unite the Jewish community in Sunny Isles for an event.
I'd be much more in support of doing that during the Hanukkah season or during that time because
Well, this is Jewish Heritage Month.
Or just more for Jewish.
Sense to do it now.
No, I understand that, but for instance, eh, since we have Jewish Heritage Month, Jewish American, rather, Heritage Month, um, you know, doing something potentially for that or for Israel Day, because there's lots of uh, actual events that are recognized and celebrated. Both locally and at the state level and at the federal level, I don't, I don't think that we should be creating something additional unless they came to us and asked for it, and so far, no one's asked me personally.
For me, well, I'm acknowledging the fact that our Jewish community is not united.
I think they're very united.
No, and actually, they do events together, but the uh, Ha'bad stay separate. They don't, and this is an opportunity to have the Ha'bad's all come together for one event.
All right, what what does the rest of the Commission um, say?
I really like the 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 way that it was done last year with with all the Rabbis present and and the Mayor, uh, Mayor Kava, and you know, I I thought it was a very very memorable, it was a very nice thing. Uh, I think that we need to discuss, um, you know, offline, the details because I, while I like the sentiment and doing like the proclaiming a day and inviting people, it's actually not kind of similar to the other discussion about like how how you acknowledge certain things. Um, if it's, if it's around congregations, then I worry that if if we're straying into into problematic issues. I don't know that offhand, I'm just, because I I like the idea, but as I was hearing you speaking about it, I'm like, I wonder if we're, if we're straying, you know, where we shouldn't. But I I certainly really, I thought that the way it was done last year with all the Rabbis and everybody spoke and 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 the um, how each had something, a different positive experience to say about the city, I I thought it was really nice. Uh, so, but I think we need to flesh it out a little bit more in in terms of having an event around it. Only because you're specifically talking about congregations and then I worry about constitutional rub. But I think acknowledging the day uh, is, I'm I'm very comfortable with that and I'll be more comfortable taking it beyond that. Uh, once we can look into it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm okay with the idea. I just think that it needs to be um, developed a little bit more because you're talking about congregations. I don't know if they're all gonna say, they're gonna, no, no, but I I know you.
The solidarity.
I think I know what you're trying to do, um, but what about if they don't come? What about if only two congregations come and?
Well, that wouldn't be the case because it would be the entire, we're putting something out for the entire city.
No, I like the idea. I I just think you need to talk to each con, have you talked to each congregation and about the idea or not yet?
Yes, I, yeah.
What do they say?
We had a, uh, there were prior commitments today, otherwise we would have had the Rabbis down again, but they know, but I said to them that this was not the same as last year because it was supposed to be continuing. And it's just, we missed out on the event this year, but I'm trying to not have that happen in years, you know.
You gotta make sure you have their commitment, so.
Yes, exactly.
Because if it's solidarity, then.
Once I know that the city is on board, then we can.
Uh, it needs to be solid.
Well, there is, there's, there is.
Can you schedule it? I I know it won't technically be, you know, the the month, but the sentiment would still be there. Can it be done next month?
Yes, we can do something, sure.
Just like we did it last year, it was, it's really nice.
Mm-hmm.
I really liked it, so maybe that's like a B plan.
Yeah, and then even if we have just a small something with some food that we can invite the community, that's basically the idea.
Mayor?
Yes.
We're gonna need, well, we have to ensure that we have the space. We don't have a budget set aside for this. In terms of donations, donations require your approval as as a group. So my thinking is, if you want to have something next month, we could have it at the workshop like we did the first time, and then if you want us to have some sort of refreshments or something after, if that's your direction, we can do that. But I just don't want, I don't want it to be nebulous going fur because when you talk about an event, are you talking about an event to the extent of the city anniversary? Or just an event having refreshments? So there's varying degrees of events. What we did, I think, last year to Commissioner Baskara's point was, we had it at the workshop, we had the Rabbis here. So if that's the intent to do it again and then have some sort of refreshments or something like that, invite the community to a smaller scale, then we can probably work something like that, if that's your direction. But we need a little more clarification.
If I was to have a consensus from congregations, and I'm not talking about the synagogues, I'm talking about the congregants. Jewish congregants, just, you know, the residents of the city. Um, would we be able to have something at Gateway, let's say, where we bring everyone together?
It's up to you all as a group, not them.
Right.
I, it's hard for me to 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 agree to something if I don't know what it is. How much are we talking about? How much would it cost? You know, when would, when would it be and do we even have their consensus that they want to do this?
Here, so let's, so, we've had um, congregations do events. Uh, let's say Rabbi Amar did an event at Heritage Park. The city didn't contribute anything, they just allowed him to use Heritage Park for that one event he had.
They rented it.
They rented it, okay, they rented it, yes, yeah. Right, but the, but, yeah, they paid everything, correct. So that was an event, I forget which one it was, um, uh, Sinca Tora or?
No, that was for Hanukkah. They rented the park for Hanukkah.
So each congregation does something for Hanukkah at their expense, except they lease the space from the city or whatever. So in in that regard, if we were to do something for this event and the city allowed us to use Gateway, but the uh, the Rabbis at the same way they went for their expense during Hanukkah, we, they would contribute as well and the city would allow us to use the space. Is that something that would uh, work?
Um, Mr. City Manager, I I I see you have questions, so can you please spell out exactly what sort of information you need from this Commission in order to help Commissioner Joseph figure this out?
That would work, I can put it together.
Because I think that it's, as we're having this discussion, it's now changing.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm just, yeah, because I'm thinking how it could work.
But I think it needs to be flushed out, is this a point, because it's, it's, and I appreciate what you're doing, it just seems that you're not sure of exactly what you want.
Yeah, put a P and L together, please.
P and L? Thank you.
It's already, we've already missed it for this month, but I'm working on next year now. So I'd like, I'm trying to have a resolution from the Commission saying that we can even have something for next year at this time during Jewish Heritage Month.
I'm okay with the idea, let's just, I think you need to discuss with staff.
Put it together, so it happens.
So, Mr. City Manager, can you please uh, let us know what you need from us in order to, so that we don't keep talking about things that may or may not be able to happen because we don't know what we're requesting?
I think I made it clear what I'm requesting.
Okay, can you repeat it?
Moving the goal line.
Yeah, we're moving the.
So, okay, no, okay, so yeah, because I'm going back now to the idea that was to be last year.
But just to be clear, so that we all are able to come to a consensus, what exactly are you requesting for June?
Each year proclamations, what we need, I'm asking now for a resolution from the Commission for a Jewish Solidarity Day in Sunny Isles Beach where the residents, the Jewish residents of Sunny Isles and other residents that would like to join in solidarity for the city itself, to have an event during Jewish Heritage Month where we have solidarity with all of the residents of Sunny Isles and particularly the Jewish residents.
Okay.
At at a place of mutual agreement, hopefully at Gateway Park.
Um, Mr. City Manager?
I think if we do first things first, which would be if it's your direction, next month, we can bring you back a resolution. Firstly, designating a certain day every year, as you're suggested, suggesting. And establish that, and then we could work out the dynamics to the extent of the event after. But starting first with a resolution that's gets approved by you all. Celebrating or recognizing one day each year during the month of May, if that's when you're suggesting that we recognize Jewish Solidarity Day. And then we could build on it from there, but first getting approval as a resolution.
All right, can you please, for for the purposes of the resolution, define what you mean by Jewish solidarity? Because do you, do you mean solidarity with the Jewish people?
No, I'm talking about that our community in Sunny Isles is kind of splintered, that when we have a holiday, it's each group of congregants goes to a different place. I'm trying to have one day where we celebrate all together Jewish Heritage Month.
Okay, so it would be Jewish Heritage Month, not Jewish Solidarity?
Yes, but I'm calling it Jewish Solidarity Day because we're bringing together all of the groups in Sunny Isles in one place for a celebration.
And that's just where we have to be careful, the Commissioner Baskara's point.
That's why I said it, the way I said it.
No, I know, but if the intent is to bring the congregations together in solidarity, we have to be.
It's not the congregations, it's the the splintered Jewish residents, yes, that usually celebrate separately.
Right, which are the congregants.
Yes, which are the congregants.
That, that's why you need to have the commitment from.
Yeah, I think we need, we need to do the, I'm sorry, the the legal, we have to, we we you, the the con, I know you think that with wording you can get around the constitutional challenge, but at the end of the day, the Constitution is the Constitution, right? So it's, we know it's okay to to acknowledge a day and like, we know that we've been doing and there's nothing wrong with that. But the moment that you're trying to make it into an event and that it, that it requires, we've had this discussion with with the donations, right, that it requires.
There's a celebration this week, this week in North Miami Beach Jewish Heritage Month.
I don't know what North Miami Beach does and I don't assume that because a city is doing it, that they're doing it right, and we've had that conversation also in other ways. So I think we're, I'm good with like what we did last year, where the Rabbis came and the community was present and 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 I really thought that was beautiful. And it's, and it's fits within what we're allowed to do. But what you're asking beyond that is, I think we we have to do some homework around it because it may rub up against that same issue that we had in other things.
Okay, so we can do our homework and set it for next month and possibly have a resolution so that we don't miss it next year.
Um, Vice Mayor, you want to say something?
Yeah, I I mean, we'll just have to make sure that constitutionally it's okay, uh, I'll support it. I think that at first I thought it was Jewish solidarity that, you know, we we support the Jewish community, but I, now I notice that you want to bring all the congregations together.
Well.
And um, yeah, that's a big task. You never, you want to be peacemaker.
Yeah, well, they just, they, I don't know if it's just from habit or just because, you know, there's different um, you know, there's Russian and there's a Russian community and then we have a Spanish community, a French community, I want to bring them all together. So it happens to be that they're Jewish, but it's bringing the communities together. That's what.
No, I understand. I I I don't know, I mean, I'm not Jewish, so, but you're bringing people together and they might have, want to be on their own, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just, these are questions I'm asking.
Bringing the residents together.
I I I think.
Who happen to be Jewish.
And then if we spend money on a religious event, then there's a constitutional question too.
I would say then you'd have to bring the 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 Christian and the Catholics and Baptists, you're opening up a.
And then it just becomes international day.
We could do a multi-faith, if anybody wants to participate.
Multi-faith, but then that's still religion. All right, I think we're.
Yeah, still religion too, yeah, that's true, so, yeah.
Mr. City Attorney, do, can you give us, can you give us direction?
No, because Jewish is not only a religion, you see, that's the thing.
All right.
That's, Jewish is not only a religion.
It is when we're talking about congregations.
Well, I got away from the word congregation.
Well, like Commissioner Baskara said.
But you weren't letting me get away from it.
All right, um.
There's a Jewish state, so I'm looking to bring the Jewish people together.
I'm okay with your idea.
Okay.
You could pull it off, man, if you could get them all together, that'd be great, yeah.
Jewish is not only a religion.
No, I understand.
The direction would depend on what actually would be occurring and I still don't have a clear idea as to what that is. So, I mean, I can't give you direction now, I mean, perhaps if we develop it a little bit more as we develop it, but I wouldn't be able to give you direction now because I don't know exactly what it would be or what it would constitute.
We're not celebrating the religion part of it.
No, it's not just celebrating, who's paying for what, whose event is it?
Commissioner Joseph, if you could flush it out and give it to staff, that would be.
I will bring it back for next month and for a resolution.
Okay.
And and some type of budgeting.
Okay, perfect. With that, uh, we'll see you all at six thirty, meeting adjourned.
Good.